Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Here.
And five zero. Go ahead and move on to public participation, public comments. If there's any member of the public that's here this evening that wishes to address the board, you may do so at this time. Just walk up to the podium, sign your name. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item B, which is recognition of Denise Sporakis, 2142 Cypress Court, and Amy Leckinger, 2364 River Ridge Road, for organizing the donations for the tornado victims. And so, at this time, I'd like to ask you to meet me up at the podium and give me a chance to sign. You can bring your daughter with if you want. Say I'm going to go. Right here, if that makes sense. So this is a particular recognition on behalf of the Village Board for all that you did above and beyond what we would normally think of a citizen doing for the victims of the tragic tornado. We won't be offended if you take up. All right, we'll move on to item C, the National Night Out Proclamation, which I will read and entertain a motion to approve. Whereas National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug and violence prevention program called National Night Out. And whereas the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the Village of Montgomery to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the Village of Montgomery be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crimes, drugs, and violence in this Village of Montgomery. And whereas the police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Matthew T. Brawley, President of Montgomery, do hereby call upon all citizens of the Village of Montgomery to join the Montgomery Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the annual National Night Out. And further, let it be resolved that I, Matthew T. Brawley, Village President, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2013, as National Night Out in the Village of Montgomery. On this date, the 22nd of July, 2013, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Take the roll.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
And if you haven't figured out, that's why we're all wearing the National Night Out t-shirts tonight, so encourage everybody to come out on the 6th. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll summarize and then I'll entertain a motion to approve. Item A, minutes of the executive session. B, minutes of the special village board meeting of June 18th. C, the minutes of the executive session of June 18th. D, the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on June 18th. And then the village board meeting on the 24th. Moving on to F, accounts receivable report for May of 2013. G is the building report for June. H is our accounts payable through June 16th. The amount is $645, 296, and 68 cents. I, resolution 2013-015. J, ordinance 1576. K, requests from the Girl Scouts to sell products door-to-door. L is the intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for animal control. M, resolution 2013-016. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved. Second. Second. Take the roll.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
And that carries five zero. With that, we'll move on to number six, which is items for separate action. A, ordinance 1563, amending the village code regarding solicitors. This is a waiver of first and passage on the second reading. And with that, I'll ask Attorney Anderson for his summary.
Sure. For you is a draft of an ordinance amending the solicitor's ordinance, but only as to one section right now. I also included a memo, because I understand from last week that there were some questions. I tried to answer those questions there. That doesn't mean that every answer related to a change in the ordinance. The change is relatively simple. It adds to the ordinance a provision for Sunday hours for soliciting. We went with 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There's no magic to that number. We just thought it was a little bit less than most other days, kind of like any Sunday operation, but still provided for some soliciting hours on Sunday. Beyond that, I mean, that's the change to the ordinance. So if there are particular questions that you have, I can answer those.
I just, I have a couple of questions. Just for clarification purposes, the people who need a soliciting permit, as they're soliciting door-to-door, they have to have that permit on them, correct?
I believe so, yes. I can't speak specifically, but I believe if I recall the ordinance, yes. For those that require it.
And the ones that do not require charitable, religious, and political?
Correct, basically non-commercial.
Okay. The... Plastic bags with the rock that are being thrown on the driveways, they would technically need a solicitor's permit, wouldn't they?
Don't think that's solicitation. I think it's littering.
Is it litter?
As we talked about, absolutely, I think it is. But it's a not, it's more of a... Solicitations are actual physical contact by humans, I believe. That's an advertising medium without question, and one that violates our ordinances. But I don't think it's the solicitor's ordinance that it's violating.
And what about the stuff that they slide in the door? Technically, they're at your door. Is that soliciting?
I don't think so. Again, I think it boils down to the contact. Right, that's littering or deposit of materials. I mean, I think we could probably cut that a couple of different ways, but I don't think it's the solicitor's ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I see where Trustee Youngerman's going with this, though, to say, if you're going to come to my door, you need a permit, but if you're going to throw stuff in my yard, you don't. If the rationale for the permit is so the village knows the legal contact information for the solicitors and how to reach them, then it would seem to me it would be a benefit to the residents if we could include material that is thrown into your yard as well as requiring a permit.
Well, we could. We could look at it. Again, I really just, I don't think it fits within the four corners, if you will, of this particular regulation. If you think about it, the Supreme Court, and you know I love to talk about the Supreme Court, the justification that they have accepted for these ordinances, as far as it goes, is public safety. In other words, they are concerned about the people who are physically approaching you at your home with the risk of breaking in. That doesn't exist when you're talking about something being thrown from the car. I'm not meaning to minimize the importance of what you're talking about. I'm just saying I don't think it fits within that same paradigm, for lack of a better term. However, again, while we could create regulations, right now, what they're doing is totally illegal. So to create regulations would be to permit it and then regulate it. And I don't think you necessarily want to permit it.
What's the enforcement?
Of?
Ticket?
Of which? Of this...
Littering, of the littering.
Yes, the enforcement mechanism, like any other crime or quasi-crime, is to charge somebody with a violation of it, which is an ordinance violation, like anything else. The hard part is IDing the defendant, because you don't necessarily know who did it. You had to catch them in the act. But that's true of almost any violation we talk about.
Couldn't you just call the number and say, listen, this is a problem. If you continue to do this, we're going to issue a citation.
Well, the problem, yes, you can do that. And in fact, the chief has done that on past occasions with some success for a period of time. The problem is they keep, new ones do it, people change, you know, so it's kind of a constant recurring problem. But when we talk about prosecuting, we have to prosecute the person who littered, not the person who produced the flyer.
Seems like they do it at night.
They probably do.
Almost, because I wake up and there it is. Now, would the ticket be per driveway?
Sure, if you can identify who the defendant is, and they threw out 300 of them in an evening, and you could ID them in court, then we could charge them with 300 separate violations in that example.
Okay.
The hard part, though, is usually what you would be doing is you'd be catching the minion, for lack of a better term, not the orchestrator of it.
Well, that's why I'm thinking the phone call from the police department saying, you know, cease and desist. You need to stop doing this, because, and again, that's, the goal is to stop it from happening.
Correct.
Not to find them or to ticket them, it's to get them to stop doing it. So, understanding that it keeps occurring, so does speeding, but we still give out tickets for that. So you just have to kind of be somewhat vigilant at it, maybe?
I think that's right, and so when you do get them, I mean, I get them too. You know, it happens everywhere. When you do get them, if you want to let the chief know, he'll continue to be a bug in people's ear, I believe. Sorry to not turn this way.
Anybody else have any questions on the ordinance revision or also the memo that he drafted up today?
Me.
Is there a penalty for not having a permit in soliciting personally?
Yes, up to $750 per violation.
As a practical matter, the person who asked to see a permit and the individual who couldn't display one, how would the scenario evolve from there forward?
In other words, a person, a solicitor comes to someone's door, person answers the door, they say, I'm selling, I don't know, newspapers or some other commercial enterprise. So you know that they need to have a permit, and they say, well, I'm not going to show it to you. I lost it. The answer would be to call the police if you felt strongly enough about it, and then the police would be able to verify whether or not a permit had been issued. I assume, right, Dan? And we have prosecuted those in the past successfully.
My question, then, regarding the memo that you included for us. When we were talking about the political campaigning within the village property or within the building, so is that something that's going to be a separate ordinance, or it will fall under the solicitor?
It does not fall under the solicitor's ordinance. This is talking about solicitation at private residences or businesses. It doesn't cover this building at all. We have not drafted any policy for the village hall, different from the one that Trustee Bond had prepared before the election. And there is an existing policy, there's that policy that Trustee Bond started. I kind of finished, but I don't think we ever got final direction on if you want to go there or not. You know, there's no requirement that you have such a policy. It's a policy decision on your part.
Separate discussion, then.
I would be content to move that we vote on this if we've had enough discussion.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, I move.
Do you have a second? Any other discussion? Take the roll, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
And that carries five zero. We'll move on to item B this evening, which is ordinance 1580, granting and delegating certain powers to the village administrator. And this is again, a waiver of the first and passage on the second reading. And again, I will ask for Attorney Anderson to summarize.
Sure. I, this is very similar to what you saw last week. I did a little bit of reformatting, and then I changed two things. One was, my understanding was, at the request of Trustee Bond, that we reinsert letter I, which coincidentally is still letter I, but it was letter I in the previous enacted version. And that relates to ultimate responsibility for handling and following up of inquiries and requests for public service. So I didn't edit it, I just inserted it as it was. The other change was item F, and that relates to the spending power. I put that in, that used to be separate, and quite honestly, I don't recall why I had it separate, but I did. But I couldn't figure out a reason, at least when I was drafting on Friday, why it needed to be. So I put it in here, and the way that I drafted this was a little different from what we've done in the past, based on what I understood the board's discussion was last week. The amount of the village administrator's authority is $20,000 or less. However, there are a couple of limits on that. One, the amount that he's approving has to be budgeted. Now, I say budgeted generally or specifically? Because there are some things that will be specifically budgeted, but there's other things that would fall into the realm of generally accepted. The example, when Jeff and I were brainstorming about this, was if your server went down. You won't find in your budget a line item for a server, but you will find money for it, you know, in emergency, if you will. It may not even be an emergency, but it's the sort of thing you wouldn't budget for, but you will need when it happens. So it's in the ordinary course of municipal governance that you might need that. The example I would give that would fall outside of that is you might have money in the budget generally, let's say, for $20,000, but Jeff decides that the Village of Montgomery needs a navy and decides to buy a sailboat. That's outside the realm of normal. And so that sort of thing is not okay under the way we've drafted this ordinance. So it has to fall within that normal standpoint, notwithstanding this weekend's...
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah. And then the other is an emergency. He has spending authority up to $20,000, even if it's not budgeted, if it's an emergency. We thought with those two caveats in there, we kind of reflected that, hopefully, the discussion of the board from last week. With that, everything else is what you've already seen, and I would answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Attorney Anderson or Jeff? I guess, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved. We have a second. Second. Any discussion on the item?
Yes. So, we talked about this at length twice now. And in our last meeting, I was kind of torn by which way to go with the wording that we were discussing at length. And that was regarding the hiring and firing, and should that be subject to board approval. So my concern is with this wording in the ordinance, there can be the political influence that President Brawley had mentioned in our last meeting. And that concerns me to have the wording in there for that reason than, more so than taking it out. And because I don't want to see our department heads having to walk on eggshells around the people who are elected here. The mix has the potential to change every two years. The wording that you were using, they'd end up with eight bosses instead of having one. So... After, I thought about it a lot after the last meeting. My preference is to have it removed from the ordinance, where we're not having to approve the appointing, suspending, or removing for that reason. I feel like that's, threat isn't necessarily the right word for it, but I feel like that's... To me, it's more, it's heavily weighted in that favor, that that could happen more so than our administrator doing something without talking with the board. Because I think if the administrator were to do that, to go ahead and release someone, one of the department heads from their position, without speaking with the board or consulting with the board, I would say he probably wouldn't have a job much longer after that, let alone a career. So for me, that's less likely to happen than having the political influence of somebody getting upset with one of the department heads and then gathering votes to release them from their position or pressuring Jeff at that point to release them from their position. So that's what I kind of had to think about in the last week or so. And again, my preference is to remove that wording from the ordinance.
Okay.
Just a comment, if you decide to do that, it's very easily done in this version, and I can help you make the motion if that's ultimately the way the board goes. It's in section B, the first sub-paragraph.
My question, I have a question, though, related to it, is... I thought we had only talked about the firing of department heads, not, you know, suspending them. I was shocked to see that wording in there. I didn't, disciplinary action, I didn't think was part of the discussion. It was just termination.
That's true, the discussion was, didn't really revolve around suspending.
Suspending. And/or appointing, you know, it was just not being able to just fire somebody. So that, I was shocked to see that in there, and that was new. And I, the board can't make an action to release a department head. That's the village administrator's job, just with approval. Am I mistaken, am I misinterpreting something?
Are you asking legally, or what's?
In practice, I mean, I get exactly what Teresa's saying.
Legally first.
That's right, I'll answer legally. Legally, absolutely, you can. You know, today, if you felt like it, not suggesting you do it, but if you felt like it, other than the fact that it's not on the agenda, you could act right now, if you have a majority, to release one of the employees. Any employee, not just department heads, any employee. I wouldn't advise it, but you could do it legally. In practice, your second point, no, in practice, it's typically you go through a chain of command. But absolutely, the power, all powers reside with this board. And by the way, if you want to make that change, that's also pretty easily done within that sub-paragraph. So whatever you, whatever you want, I think we can probably, if you arrive at your consensus, I can help you through the motion, so you can act tonight if you wish to do so.
Okay. Well, when we talked about that last week, it was pretty well split. I know that Trustee Heinz isn't here this evening, unfortunately, but we'd like to get either thoughts or poll the board and see what the consensus is on that. I'll start with Denny. It would, can you, can you maybe highlight what we would change?
I think, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we go again in B, and then that first in-bracketed paragraph, and I did change the formatting, so that's maybe what you're seeing is different. The word, in the first sentence, it says, except as to personnel governed by the Board of Police Commissioners, individuals governed by Illinois law, and department heads. If you don't want the department heads subject to the board's influence, however you want to call it, we delete the words "and" department heads in that first sentence. And then, we would continue into the second sentence. And if you want the board having nothing to do with department heads, we could probably take that second sentence out entirely. In other words, the village administrator just handles personnel, except for Board of Police and for our commissioners. If, on the other hand, you want the board to be involved in appointments, we would leave appointments in, but take out suspended and removed. If you want them involved in appointments and suspensions, we'd leave those in and take out removed. You know, in other words, we can break those down any way you want.
I think if, if we leave any of that in there, then it somehow undermines the authority of the village administrator, is my opinion.
Denny, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, the first part said department heads, like Steve said, and then the next sentence says, it's only subject to board approval.
Right now, you can't, if this were to pass as drafted, you could not remove, Jeff could not remove or appoint or suspend a department head. If you take out "and" department heads in the first sentence, and you take out that second sentence entirely, now Jeff can appoint, suspend, remove, as he sees fit. Subject to Trustee Spurley's point about him losing his job.
I don't think it would be a good career move to do it.
Yeah. I'm fine with it is, but I'll go either way, it doesn't make a difference. I'm happy the way it is.
You're happy the current draft or striking it?
Current draft.
Okay.
I'd like to see it changed, I agree with Teresa.
I would like to see it changed, just to be removing the appointing and suspending, just to limit it to the firing of, to the removal of.
You mean that his, he would...
His authority ends at releasing them. He can suspend them.
Without board approval?
Yeah, without board approval.
So he could hire and suspend?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be the opposite, so he'd be striking?
Or removed. No, it's the opposite, you're right.
He'd be striking.
You'd be saying department heads may only be remo...
Removed.
Removed, subject to board approval.
Correct.
That's the way that you want that?
That's the way, that's the way I envisioned it.
Okay.
I, I don't think the board should give away this involvement. What's politics or political influence to one person is being sensitive to the feedback you're going to get from your constituents to another. You have 18,000 bosses as a trustee. And while I don't really envision a problem of this nature that we're going to have to address, it doesn't hurt to have the language in this ordinance that lets us address it if we ever do have such an instance. You know, the big complaint of people is that government is not responsive to me, it doesn't care about me, I'm just a number, I've complained, I never got a response. You're going to hear that. And one way to help guard against that kind of indifference is to have language like this in your ordinance. So, while I don't think we'll ever use it, I think it's, it's useful to have it in place in case we ever do need it.
So I think that's roughly three, to keep it the same. And then...
I like Doug's comment, just that one sentence. I go along with that. I mean, I agree with Stan, there's 18,000 people, but they put us in these chairs for a reason.
Yeah.
And I would think approval, like Doug said, is good. Just leave that part of it in there.
That's actually the one that I, actually, between suspend and remove are the two that I would like us to take out.
Yeah.
I'd like us to be involved with the hiring, to pick the next person. Once you're on board, you got one boss.
Right.
And so, it sounds like there's three people that like it, similar to the way that it is, without striking one thing or the other, and there's two that would like to change it, so... Right? Am I doing the math right?
Well, there's two, Denny and...
Yeah. Mine's Doug.
Doug, thank you. Want, I guess, they have another. Want those little changes made, Teresa and I want the big changes made. Stan doesn't want any changes made, is what I'm hearing.
So if we can... Let's do it this way, let's build a consensus. Break these three words up. Maybe we'll do that real quick. Appointing, should that be subject to board approval?
No.
Yes, no, no. Denny? To hire a department head, subject to our approval, or no?
Which words did Doug have, I'm sorry?
You know what, I'm, actually, I'm okay with the appointed, because you're right, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about that, about the hiring process. I think that that's a good level to be involved in as well, at the department head level. So really, the only issue I have is the word suspended, because that's disciplinary. And that's something that as a boss, he needs to have.
Okay. Let's not use, up front, hire, suspend. We'll say fire, sounds nicer. Okay. I almost got halfway through hire before we did that. So, hire, you think we should be involved? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
No.
You don't think we should be involved in the hiring? No? Yes?
Department heads?
I can live with that.
Okay, so we'll keep that in. Suspend, who thinks we should be involved in that process? No? No?
No.
No?
No.
No, no. Clean shot. So we'll remove that. And then who thinks that we should be involved in the firing of department heads?
No.
Yes? Yes? No? Yes?
No.
So that's three, two. So we'll keep that in. All right?
So department heads may only be appointed or removed, subject to village board approval, is what we're really saying, right?
Yes.
In other words, for Jeff to hire or to fire a department head, he has to come see you. Yes? But if he wants to suspend somebody-
Suspend you all day long. And one last- throw this in there. The suspension, for me, is very similar to the firing in that you have an employee who is not doing their job, but we don't see that. We don't work with department heads every day. And that's my only reasoning behind why that shouldn't be subject to our approval, is we don't see them. We see them at meetings, Montgomery Fest, National Night Out. That's my reason why. So I make my peace with that.
Somebody- you want me to explain the change one more time, and then somebody can say, "I moved to approve that"?
We have a motion on the floor, do we not?
Yeah, we do.
We'll have to withdraw.
Have to deny that.
Right.
So whoever made the motion is seeking to withdraw it? Yes?
Who made that motion?
Doug.
Okay. I withdraw the motion.
And the second?
Second, to withdraw.
Okay. So now we're back down to-
All right. So can you highlight the changes that we're about to make?
In section B, first sub-paragraph, first sentence, the word "words and department heads" is deleted. In the second sentence, the word "suspended" is deleted. That's it.
Awesome. And is there a motion?
I moved.
Oh.
Moved by Trustee Bond, second by-
Doug, second.
And take the motion, or take the roll, please?
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
No.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
All right. That carries three, two. We'll move on to item C this evening, which is the award of contract for the Third Avenue water main replacement to Vian Construction Co. in the amount of $139,902. And with that, I'll ask Engineer Wallers for a summary.
Thank you, President Brawley. We had taken bids on the Third Ave water main improvement. It's in the FY14 budget. You may recall that the project was on hold for some time because we were waiting on the funding, our state grant funding to be realized, and we do have that now. So we proceeded. We did get six bidders. We're recommending award to the lowest bidder, which is Vian Construction, out of Elk Grove Village, in the amount of $139,902. And it's under the engineer's estimate, which was approximately $181,110. Be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
When are they looking to start construction?
Typically, we would expect that that would be mid-August.
Are there any comments for Engineer Wallers on this?
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Youngerman?
Second.
Second by Doug.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And that carries five, zero. We'll move on to item D this evening, intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Montgomery and the State of Illinois for improvements to IL Route 31 and at Watkins Street intersection. And I'll turn this over again to Engineer Wallers.
Thank you, President Brawley. This is similar to an agreement that the village entered into with the Route 30 improvements from Route 34 to Briar Cliff. Basically, what's spelled out in the agreement is the village's local agency share of the project at the interchange. And this is particularly for the connection of Watkins at Route 31, where the ramp is going to be aligned, realigned at Route 30. And Jeff, if you can go to the next slide, it's probably easier to see. So this is just an aerial of the area we're talking about. But I think what you can see out there now is they're going to rebuild these, the two existing ramps, and the new ramp is actually going to relocate so that it intersects with Watkins. And then Watkins will extend across the tracks, and that'll be the new crossing. If you go to the next slide, it's probably a little easier to see. This is the landscaping plan, but what happens is this is Watkins here, railroad here. The K Street, the old K Street entrance is going to be, or crossing, is going to be eliminated by the state, and the new crossing will be at Watkins here. So primarily, the agreement covers the cost share of the intersection and of the emergency preemption. The state will not fund emergency preemption, and that is the equipment that is installed on our signals that allows emergency vehicles to get the right of way at the intersection. So it's a strobe-oriented system that registers that and then changes it to a green so that the emergency vehicle can pass through. We have tried to get that on all of our signals as they become, as they get revised or get updated. So that's consistent with that. So the other element in the agreement, which is a little unusual, is a request for some no parking. And if you go back to the one slide back, Jeff, what they're asking for is that we agree to have no parking on Route 31, which is state right of way. And there is no parking there anyway, so I really don't think that that's much of an issue relative to us. It does state in the future, if there are issues, that we would consider no parking at Watkins as well. And I guess that would just depend on circumstances. So I don't think the no parking is significant in this case, but I wanted to point it out because it is in the agreement, so that you're just aware of it. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that anybody might have. And go from there, I guess.
What about that parking on Watkins, no parking? Is that in the agreement?
It's not. And I was just trying to find the language exactly so I could read it. I thought I had highlighted it, but it looks like I haven't, so.
This was not brought up to my neighbors, as far as I know.
Well, let's, you know, one other thing that I probably should mention is that this project kind of went through what I would call an unusual process. Typically, any large state-funded, federally-funded project goes through what's called a Phase One, which is the preliminary engineering study, and then it's a Phase Two, which is design, and then Phase Three is construction. This project and the Route 34, or the Route 30 project between Briar Cliff and Route 34 were, had Phase One studies done in 1997, I believe. Well, normally, if the village was doing a project, the state would require us to update the Phase One, because it's so outdated. But the state, you know, can do things that we're not able to do. And they went forward with the design of the project using the old Phase One studies. And the Phase One is where you have citizen involvement typically. So that process was really truncated. And if you think now about what's happening with the Phase One study that's being done on Route 30 from Albright all the way out to 47, they formed a citizens advisory group, a CAG, and there's been one meeting, and there's actually another meeting scheduled for Thursday. So there's a lot more open process to review things. This was a little bit of a closed process. They wanted to get the projects completed. They felt that the interchange improvements was a safety issue because of the radiuses of the ramps and other things. So to respond, I guess, to your kind of comment, Trustee Lee, yeah, it wasn't as well-publicized as I think the village would have liked, but we're not, we weren't in control of the process or the plans.
How about the truck traffic?
As far as which question?
Are they going to stop the truck traffic, or they make them go on 31?
If you can go to the next slide. So the- the real issue is the proximity of the crossing to the intersection of railroad. The original Phase One, which was done in 97, had a full, had full access here both ways, did not have the cul-de-sacking of railroad, okay? After several significant accidents with, on railroad, particularly one where a school bus was involved in a tragic accident, the ICC really took a hard look at the configuration of signals and intersection and location of such, and the geometry. And they no longer allow to have a full intersection this close to the railroad tracks. And reason being is, what they're trying to avoid is conflicts between left-hand turns, right-hand turns, and people that will stop on the tracks when the crossings go down and not proceed forward, or not able to proceed forward, because there's interference with traffic. So you may recall, we went, we were presented with, I think, maybe five or six alternatives that we worked through. I don't think anybody was pleased with the options we had, but I believe the best alternative that was available to us was to keep the access to the south full. So the industrial buildings that are on the south of railroad have full access to do a right or a left turn. And the residential areas over here are cul-de-sac. They'd have to go down and over to get back to railroad, or Watkins, to get out. So it's not ideal, but it's a safety issue relative to ICC and IDOT, and ICC wouldn't permit any full access at that location. So that's where we're at. The agreement, again, doesn't cover any no parking along Watkins. It only refers to Route 31. And I'm going to, before we're done here, I'd like to find that language so I get it right.
I don't think the people on South Railroad, they aren't going to be mad about it, because it'll cut off a lot of the traffic. And Dan, you'll notice that South Railroad has a lot of traffic going toward line metal. I think it'll be the people on River Street, where it dead-ends into, and everybody uses River Street now, or Main Street, instead of Railroad Street, which I think people can have some cars. But for, is there any way locally, we can put up signs that say, "Local truck traffic only"? Because if a guy comes off of the ramp and doesn't know which way to go, and he goes straight, he's going to be right in the neighborhoods. And there's no way he's going to turn trucks on the corners there, right, Dan?
I think you could post no- no truck traffic, for example, at the intersection here, so you'd allow trucks to go into the industrial area, but not can continue to the, to the east, if that was what you-
But you can't put one on 31 that says, "Local truck traffic only"?
I'd defer to both the chief and Attorney Anderson. I think the definite, trying to define that and enforce that in court may be a little challenging.
You're saying putting the sign at Route 31?
Yeah.
As they come off that ramp?
Right. So they know they can't go straight. Or if not, the guy's going to go straight and end up in a neighborhood where he can't turn anywhere.
But the problem is, they can go straight and then turn left to go to the railroad street properties to the south. That's perfectly permitted, right?
He can turn right.
Turn right.
I got it backwards. Turn right.
Left is a stop.
Go south.
So he's got to go farther south, and now he's right into a residential area where he can't turn. The streets aren't made for trucks.
What I think you can do is, I think you can post that signage there, so that they don't continue in most of the time. That's not to say they won't violate it, but at least we prohibit it. But they could go south there. If we put the signs up, even if we're even allowed to put the signs up there, thank you, Pete, which I think would be an IDOT question, that would be misleading, because some local traffic can come into the Dolan and Murphy building.
Well, if you put "local truck".
Well, that, isn't that local? Oh, you're saying post it "local truck"?
Local truck. Because once he gets in there and he takes, and he sees the sign, if he does go right, like you say, that's a dead end. I mean, he'll never go around that corner there.
Most of the time, we define trucks by weight, not by destination. So I'm not sure that that would be doable. I was thinking about it in terms of weight.
But do you think it would be more effective if we did have a problem to post a "no truck traffic" as opposed to only local? So if you were to post it down a railroad that said, "No truck traffic", do you think that's probably more effective than what he's suggesting on 31?
It would, it might help a bit.
What we could do is see if we could put an advisory sign at Route 31 that says, you know, "No truck traffic allowed, pass railroad",
That's true.
And then post it at, you know, at the intersection of, right here. But at least they would have advance warning that that was coming. Now, I don't, I don't know if the state will allow it or not. I have to check. But I could do that if that would answer.
It's not, it won't be perfect, because there'll be people who just violate it, number one. But number two, there will also be legal access there for deliveries.
Right.
You can still have trucks that exceed the weight limits for specific deliveries to homes or what have you.
Yeah, there's exceptions.
Yeah. Not to exacerbate the discussion, but coming out of the Dolan and Murphy, going north on railroad then, could we, if there was a problem, add a signage that would say, "Trucks must turn left"? Like, no right truck turns?
Well, yes, we could easily do that, because we're going to post this, "No, no trucks", if I understand you correctly, or no certain weight limit. We could easily put a sign here, because that's a local street, so that's no problem. We have more latitude in that regard.
Would you say that it would be better to let this get redesigned and see what happens, or be proactive and jump out in front of it?
Well, I think if there's a desire to prohibit truck traffic from going east into, you know, neighborhood streets, I think we should post it right from the get-go. You know, obviously, within reason after they get the project built. Because the sooner, because it'll all be new, and at least that will get the word out as soon as practical. So I think if that's, and you know, we did have a, we did modify the truck route here in, off of Webster and River. And I think it's probably violated from time to time, but my observation is that, you know, people do obey it, and it, you know, it has reduced the number of trucks. So as I think Attorney Anderson said, it's not going to be perfect, but at least, you know, it can be enforced through enforcement details, or, you know, a lot of times, once people get used to it, they will understand. And I'm not so sure that it's that much of a real shortcut anyway, because if you're trying to get anywhere, you can go down to Webster and get through town just as easy, so.
I think it's going to be kind of a shock for the residents that live in the Old Town area anyway with the increase, because you're going to get cars-
Right.
-a huge increase on River Street and on Main Street. But if we can at least eliminate, or not eliminate, but be proactive against the trucks, that might. But again, education on this is going to be important. I know that the state's not going to do anything, so it's going to have to come from us, even if Denny hands them out to all the neighbors.
I don't want to talk to my neighbors.
Not about this.
They're going to be mad as heck, as this is happening. Right now, you have trucks that come down from there and somehow get lost in our neighborhoods, and they take the cable wires down, anything that's low, because it's just not made for trucks. Garbage trucks take the cable wire, you know, every, every one of us had our cable wire one time whacked.
Okay. Are there any other comments or kind of objections to?
Can I just make a clarification? So I was looking for the verbiage. I just wanted to confirm. It's actually in Exhibit C that defines the parking restriction. So section one says that parking shall not be permitted along Illinois Route 31 at Watkins Street within the village limits of Village of Montgomery. So that covers the 31. The second item in section two, it says that the village board of the Village of Montgomery will prohibit future parking at such locations on or immediately adjacent Illinois 31 at Watkins, as may be determined and directed by the State of Illinois to be necessary to ensure free flow of traffic and safety for the motoring public. So that's a future requirement, but not a current requirement. So I just, I had forgotten where I had read that, but that's the- They're referring to right there, though.
Exactly.
They're not referring to down in the residential area. No, right, right. That's correct.
The term is chunk. The term is immediately adjacent, so it would just be that area, which, quite frankly, we probably wouldn't want to ever have parking.
I would want to park my- No, I don't think we would. And I think, you know, it, right. I think that it's not an inappropriate request. You know, we're certainly not allowing cars to park on 31 anyway, so.
I've jogged one question that I had about the vehicle preemption. Two of them, actually. I know that we historically have- I know that we historically have paid for the vehicle preemption on different roads when they go in. Is that something that we utilize? Do our police cars, do any of them have the vehicle preemption on them?
Not currently, but the new vehicles that we authorize in this budget are coming with them, so there'll be six that will be outfitted with them.
Awesome. So we'll start to phase that in on...
Correct.
And now our fire department utilizes that, so. And that's, historically, have we ever split the costs with anybody? I know we had talked about it.
I think on certain occasions we have where we've had, I think on Orchard Road we worked out some cost-sharing arrangements, and mainly that's a county road, a little different circumstance. I think here, it's a local road, seems appropriate for the village to provide the preemption. But I don't think I would eliminate the discussion in the future if we needed to. Certainly, you know, all the districts would benefit from having preemption, I think. But I mean, ultimately, the residents are the ones that benefit, I think.
Absolutely. Okay. Are there any other questions? That'll entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the village and the state of Illinois.
So moved.
Moved? Have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Marasek? Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Ban?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries five oh. With that, we'll move into items for discussion this evening. We have the weather warning siren, and with that, I'll ask Administrator Zolfo for a summary on that.
Thank you, President Barley. This is a follow-up to a discussion you had in June at a meeting. Engineer Wallers has prepared a presentation in conjunction with Chief Myers to try and answer some of your questions, decide how much of their thunder was gonna steal beforehand, but I'll let them present, and then we can talk afterwards about the options before you. So, give me a second to pull it up here. And you have this in front of you also.
So I pre, I handed out prior to the meeting the PowerPoint slide, so you can follow along. So Jeff, if you'd go to the first slide, please.
Do.
What I'd like to cover briefly is the existing conditions that we've found, what the options are, some obvious maybe comments and considerations, and then what the next steps might be. And this has kind of been a collaboration with village staff to go through options and things. So Chief Myers and I have been heading up the effort, but we've gotten input from Director of Public Works and Assistant Administrator and, and the village administrator. So Jeff, with that, the first thing that we noticed is our current hydrant locations don't, aren't able to serve or provide coverage to the entire village. If you go to the next slide, it's probably easier to see graphically. So what we've got now is, we have two emergency sirens in the village. One is at the village public works location on Nell. The other is right at Griffin near the police station. Those are our two sirens. They're designated as, the manufacturer's designation is P-50. It's a older-style hydrant. It's still in service today. That's what serves us, which is, you can see, the general radius of those is indicated to be somewhere between nine and eleven thousand feet of coverage. That gets you to a nominal seventy decibels when the siren is going. The radiuses are dependent upon environmental conditions like banks of trees, hills, things like that, so they may vary. If you look at the literature, it suggests that you can get eleven thousand feet. When I talked to the, the installer that the village has used in the past, Fulton, they recommend we use nine thousand for planning. So what you see up here is nine thousand-foot radiuses. The east side of the village is coincidentally covered by a siren that's over at Phillips, near Phillips Park Golf Course. That's a City of Aurora siren. Now, that happens to be a similar siren, but a little bit newer version. It's a T-135. And I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but, so we've got two P-50s and then there's a T-135 over here. So, you know, this part of the village is pretty adequately covered, but as we just mentioned, the area's down to the southwest, you know, there's some gaps here. And then, of course, our future planning area is not involved, or not covered. So with that, I think there's really two obvious options to look at relative to sirens. One is we move our existing hydrant, or excuse me, siren at Griffin to a new location, and that would be just taking that pole, resetting it at a new location. Or B would be to do a new siren at a location on village property, at a different location. If we did that, a new siren, we could go with a newer technology, which is the T-135. So Jeff, maybe the next one. So this is the, what we're calling Option A, which is basically moving the siren that was at the PD at Griffin over to a new site, and this is one of the issues we're gonna have to talk about. We're showing it right now on the open space of the four-corner par, uh, school park site. There looks to be a lot of open space there. We think that might be a, a practical location, but we'd have to get an easement, and we haven't had any discussions with the school district or the park district. If you do that, you can see that we now can cover all of our village residential. Now, in the future, we have some areas that are left out, but we get pretty adequate coverage for the rest of the village. So that's Option A that we looked at. Option B is to move, or to leave the two that we have in place and put in a new siren at, along Dixon Road on the property that we own just south of the, of the Dixon Farm complex. That's a village property that we have targeted for possibly a future well and treatment center. If we do that, we get a little more robust coverage, I think, throughout the village. You'd get some overlap here, so, you know, depending on wind speeds and environmental factors, you're pretty, a little more safe, I think, for your coverage. But also, you can see that we now cover almost the entire future area of the village. You lose a little bit, but that's where that driving range is, so I'm not sure that use is gonna change in the near future anyway. So we get really pretty complete coverage. So those are the two options for handling siren coverage for the village. So Jeff, next one. So if we look at just the, the basics here, if we move the siren, the cost is somewhere around twenty thousand, and these are just budgetary costs. If we decide to go with either option, we'll go out and get firm quotes from companies that install these. Option B then would be the new siren, and if we went with, it so happens that Fulton, for example, has P-50s still in stock, so we still could buy those if we wanted. I don't think I'd recommend it because the, the big advantage to the T-135 is that they're capable, they use a lot less power, and you can use battery backup on them. The P-150s are fifty horsepower motors, and they have a four-hundred, a four-hundred amp draw when they start, and it's like a hundred and forty amps to run them. So they're, they're power hogs. And so having a generator capable of running those is a lot, it's expensive. So I like the idea of having the ability to go with battery backup if we want to. Both have a similar coverage range, so that is fine. So it's forty to forty thou, forty-five thousand, depending on if we go new or used, or new but outdated or new technology, and coverage is about the same for both products. So if we look at our pros and cons, if you will, for move the siren, I think the advantage is it's lower cost, nominal twenty thousand. Disadvantages, we require an easement to install at a new location. It relies on the older technology. We have minimal overlap, and it does not serve our entire build-out area. For Option B, the advantage are, we install it on our own property, we can use new siren technology that allows the battery backup, provides greater overlap, and provides coverage for our future areas as well. The disadvantage, obviously, is that it's a higher-cost product, so. So maybe some of the next obvious things. We don't have this currently in the budget for funding, so that's something I know you're all aware of, but I just thought I'd, I'd like to point out the, the obvious. The second thing is we do know that there are other notification methods, such as NICSIL and weather notifications. I know Trustee Ban had brought that up at our last meeting when we discussed it. There's also the reverse nine-one-one system. So there's other things now that are starting to supplement sirens. Now, we may decide that sirens are still needed because they provide that fail-safe coverage for anybody that's outside without a phone or, you know, at a playground or whatever. But there are other things out there, too, that are supplementing the sirens. Back, you know, twenty years ago, they used to be really vital. Today, maybe not quite as much. And then last, Jeff. So the next steps would be for the board to direct staff to either, implement either Option A or B. If, if you wanted to do that at this time, we'd have to decide how we're gonna fund it. We'd have to go through the village's budget, determine what needed to be cut or rearranged. You could direct staff to do either Option A or B in the FY-15 budget process, and we would work through the funding challenges then. Or you can take no action on the siren at this time and direct staff to investigate reverse nine-one or other alternatives, either now or part of the budget. Or there might be a fourth, which might be a combination of investigating siren and alternate methods for the fifteen budget. So I think that's the, you know, the, the options that we have available to us, and we're happy to answer questions and go through anything that's not clear. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Did it, your places this evening put a timely article from the Beacon about North Aurora and their, looking at a NICSIL three-sixty system to, to do this type of thing for emergency notification? So it just gives you sort of an idea of cost of something like that. As Engineer Waller said, you know, we can do Option A where we move it, we can do B where we get a new siren, C where we don't do either of those and look at an alternative method that would send it to your landline, your smartphone, whatever you have. Or you could do a combination where you either move or get a new siren and still wanna do an alternative like this. And then, of course, you always have the option of doing nothing at all and leaving things as they are. I will follow up with him, you know, this is an unbudgeted item, so if you decide you wanna do it, we'd have to talk about whether we do that now or try and do it, make it a priority in the new budget. We have had some unbudgeted costs already this year, so it's just something we'll wanna be, be wary of going forward.
Thank you.
Are there any comments, questions for staff on this?
Do we know if there is any type of grant money that could be used to fund part of this?
Not aware this time. Could certainly investigate, but there aren't any that I'm currently aware of. I don't know if any staff is aware.
I'm really, like Stance, there's a lot of new media, different type of internet stuff you can get now. I don't, and as Teresa said, maybe something if we put it possibly in the FY-15 budget discussion and try to put it into there for the moving of it. I mean, that's twenty thousand. We don't know what's gonna happen five years from now out that direction, and that would suffice for now as far as moving it, spending twenty thousand. Everybody out that end would be able to hear it then, and new stuff may come, but to spend forty thousand, we wouldn't be able to get it in the fifteen budget, I'm sure. So I would, it's gonna be difficult getting the twenty, but I'd like to see something, at least try the discussion of putting it right there.
Okay. Comments?
When we were here for the, when you were meeting with ComEd and the power had gone out, it was my first time with my new smartphone, and unbeknownst to me, it sent me a little notice that there was severe weather coming, and it's free. I, I'm looking at this reverse nine-one-one, and it's pretty expensive. I mean, it's because it's ongoing, it's a residual. You have to keep paying for it every year. So the sirens might not be bad, but again, I think technology's coming along and we don't have the money right now.
Technology is like Stance said, is getting more and more, I mean, you turn on the TV station, every channel will tell you about when it hits Montgomery. I mean, eleven thirteen. They're getting down to almost the minute, to the point that if we turn around and spend forty thousand and nobody even listens to it, then that's kinda crazy, but I can see where the people out there want something, so we give them something that would work for five, ten years, at least.
I know that out, on that west side there, I think that's, just out west of Lakewood Creek, past the school there, where they, they don't hear the siren. And we hear it, but it, there's nothing out there for them right now. That's my only down is that we don't have any coverage for them out there right now at all, but there's no money in the budget for...
I think we need to do Option B, and I think we need to do it as quickly as possible. I spent most of my life in Missouri and Iowa where the tornado sirens seem to go off every other day, and I have a smartphone that makes noises that it says I get email. I don't even know what my smartphone, I don't know what some of the noises it makes are. So if you're gonna get a, a text or something, you could think that it's a text from someone else, one of your friends or somebody.
Oh, it came up, big red letters, "weather alert."
Yeah, but does it make a special sound? It probably just makes a text message sound.
I don't remember.
And you think it's your, your buddy asking you what you're gonna do on Saturday? And if we have coverage right now, if we're talking about a NICSIL system, why don't we eliminate the other two? Why don't we eliminate the other two tornado sirens? If, if we're saying that NICSIL is so great, or this, this system is so great, then why do we need the other two? It's because a tornado siren grabs your attention and, and warns you and tells you what's going on. Yeah, it's, it's a cost, but I'm, I'm not willing to sit here and cast a vote knowing that we have a certain portion of our population far west, and once, once development continues further west, that we're not gonna have complete coverage.
What's your problem with just going with A and moving it so everybody's got coverage right now?
Because it doesn't, it doesn't give you complete coverage of, eventually when we're built out, it doesn't give you complete coverage.
It could be ten years from now.
You're right, and in ten years, we could be having this conversation again.
We don't have the forty thousand now. Ten years from now, we might have, but right now, I can't see spending the money when we can just move it for twenty.
Well, right now, we don't have any funding source.
Right now, we don't have the twenty.
Right. We really don't have any funding for our cap, they would call this capital improvement. So we don't have any funding source for that at all. So coming up with this is going to be a stretch, so planning ten years down the road on an item like this might not be a viable option for us right now. Just to clarify, though, that NICSIL system, that, I wasn't discussing this, this, the message that I received comes from the National Weather Service, and it's free. It doesn't cost anything. I don't subscribe to anything.
Right, but, but it doesn't send a special, "this is the National Weather Service." It sounds just like any other text message you get on your phone.
No, it was... Maybe they've never gotten it, but it's like a flashing alert, tornado warning, tornado warning. You can't even use your phone unless it's an emergency. It gets serious. You look at it like, "What's my phone doing?" So, but not everybody has a cellphone. So that's the problem right into...
And if you're outside, do you have your cellphone with you?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what are we gonna, what are we gonna tell the people if there's a tornado next year? God forbid, "Well, we didn't have the money in the budget, and sorry you couldn't hear the ones that we have."
Okay. Ben?
I would be inclined, as Trustee Lee has suggested, to, to look at the move of the siren that we have. And if I'm reading this correctly, it gives us very nice coverage of the entire west side. And if the, if Chief Myers finds that this enhancement to NICSIL is useful to us, that seems affordable as well. But for the kind of money we're talking about for a brand-new siren, and when we could likely come up with those kinds of funds, I would be inclined to wait on that solution until the growth in that area has warranted it.
And you're looking at Option A?
Yes.
What do you tell, okay, the difference between Option A and Option B, as you move that tornado siren further to the west, there's a certain portion down in the lower, I guess in the middle, that yellow highlighted area there, that is no longer covered. What do you tell those people eventually?
Well, there's no one there.
Is that...
Well, that's why I said eventually.
It's re there.
Well, does the other solution address that? It looks to me like it doesn't either.
It leaves a portion, on the way west side, it leaves a portion exposed as well.
Well, that portion apparently is gonna be exposed in either option. That little corner.
And I think Engineer Waller's mentioned that that's the recreation area, if we're looking at the same...
That little corner?
Mm-hmm. Jaco Road and Forty-Seven.
This one?
And then...
Thank you. Is there a, is there a house on the sharing property down along Anchor Road or?
There is a farm stand in that area. Yes, there is.
And are there any Kendall County warning sirens that are not plotted on here or?
There are sirens in Kendall County trying to get locations and locate the sirens because we don't have the, we don't have any same coverage information. So I guess there is, in the period that they reached our area, but they showed us, but I was going to try to do a little better job of locating. See, because I thought one of the options we might have, maybe we still would, is if they're going to locate additional sirens, maybe Parker, if there was a gap.
Mm-hmm.
But so, yeah, that's the progress.
Yeah, so, okay. Chief Myers?
I met with Kendall County EMA Director Joe Gillespie, him and I went in the same vehicle and we, we went to Kennedy, Galena Road. We spoke to the chief in Yorkville, they put up a siren on, at the Bristol-Kendall Fire Department at Galena Road, their station number three. It's, it's out of the mapping, but that siren only covers approximately 5,280 feet, one-mile direction, so not quite into our town. That was the closest siren they have.
Attorney Anderson, do we have any legal responsibility to notify people of inclement weather?
You do not, you don't have a legal, you don't have a legal duty to do it.
So this is entirely voluntary on our part and?
I would say so. I mean, some, you know, somebody can frame an argument that since you're doing it in some places, maybe you have an obligation to do it and all, I don't buy that. I think that this is purely voluntary on your part.
Engineer Waller, could you, do you know where the Bristol-Kendall Fire Department building is? Can you point that out on there, if that's on there? I think it's off that map. Let me think here for a sec.
Just point on the wood about where you think it would be.
It's on Galena before you get to 47. Is it on Galena?
It's on Galena Road.
Possibly half, a quarter mile from about 47.
So probably somewhere in here. Right about there. Because that seems like if that, if we plotted that on here, that may.
It's about one mile.
We might get some coverage in that area is what you're saying. You know, that could be, we just didn't have that exact information, so. I think, I was going to say, I think we identified a need to do, to move forward. I'd like to see everything in the area plotted, I mean, one thing that we've been promoting is the board and the staff is coordinating with our neighboring agencies, with the village of Oswego, Kendall County, just to see if there's a need, maybe there's a gap that we can all pitch in. Okay. And put up one somewhere and have an intergovernmental agreement right in the middle. Because there's no reason that somebody shouldn't have coverage, because they've come to expect these kind of warning sirens and they expect that we, or somebody provides it to them. So the other question I was going to ask too is, just let my mind, but the, Teresa brought up grant funding, but is there any like, I would consider this, I know it's capital improvements, but public safety type funds, any kind of funds in the police department that we might be able to utilize for a project like this?
I can check into this further, that is a good idea to check, see if there's any grant funding out there, I will look into that further.
Are there any other comments on the issue? I think at this point, we can, a little more research, maybe contact the. We'll, we'll get the other sirens located and get their coverage on there so we can see all the picture. That's a good idea.
We will bring it back to you at that time then.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And moving on to number eight, I know for sure there's new or unfinished business this evening, so I will open it up if there's any comments or questions from the board.
I've got four items. One, I've asked before for water rates and whether at a tax rate comparisons to our other towns surrounding. And I mentioned that probably an intern could do that very quickly, but it seems like every week, the two newspapers have some article on Boulder Hill Water and I'd like to at least be able to say, here's where you rank and here's where we rank and here's where all the other towns rank. And we had this at one time, but I haven't seen it, so I'd like to see that and the tax rates. Everybody complains about the tax rates, I'd like to see our tax rate in comparison to all the other surrounding towns, and I think you'll find that we are way at the bottom of that too.
Any objections to that?
You could just put that at the next meeting, like I said, I don't think an intern.
Maybe that could be a standing feature on our website, once we've got it put together.
Yes, I think that's a very good idea, so people can see it, but I'd like to at least bring it to a committee of the whole, so the newspapers can get a hold of it and put it in there. Number two, our strategic plan mentioned that we, every year, we do a salary comparison. And we did that when we hired Jeff with the, with the department heads, we did not do it for the other people. And the strategic plan says we should do that every yearly and I'd like to see that also in comparison to how the other towns are. The third thing is the sales tax referendum to help our CIP. We talked about that already and I'd like to see some discussion, at least brought up at a committee of the whole meeting on, on how we're going to improve our CIP and we talked about that earlier, that a sales tax referendum, but we got to get that going if we're going to put it on a referendum.
And real quick on that, just to comment on that, could you put that, I know we've had three or four different memos on that, if you could just add those in and, yeah, that would be good for the new members to see that.
And last one, I guess is to Dan, I wasn't gung ho on KenCom in the first place, but I would like to know on the last meeting of negotiations before our contract, what KenCom said about the timeline?
I was not at that last one. Jeff and Jamie, where in Oswego?
Last meeting before we signed the agreement.
Right.
Last meeting that we had with KenCom, where we were discussing the agreement.
Well, I was.
What they laid, what they laid out would be the timeline too, was for this project.
I was in the impression it was June and now here we are having trouble with our dispatchers working overtime and everything. And this could go to, for a whole year. I mean, we started talking about this almost last January when the other board was here and now we're talking, I don't see any movement and we, like I said before, the two fire departments, out of the five, got caught in the middle of this. And then now, we're caught in the middle because we have to keep our dispatchers till these two departments get worked out and meanwhile, we still haven't transferred over. And I know we talked about it as being around June 1st, but we're going to August 1st and we could go to Christmas on this.
Yeah, I, um.
I'm sorry, all our discussions with KenCom were that we were shooting for by the end of September. I mean, it's always been our goal.
That was brought up in a meeting?
And that's always been our, our timeline, is we were shooting for, for the end of September. And that's still what we're hoping, hoping to hit. Armando and the deputy chief and chief and I met today and went through the list of outstanding items, where they stood, who was handling them, and we've, we're having weekly meetings on, on that to keep it moving, because we have agreements that need to get to the ICC to keep this process, process moving, but it's always been our goal is to shoot for by the end of September.
And I've never been at a meeting that said June 1st, so I'm not sure where that came from.
Are we currently paying them?
No.
We're not paying them monthly or however we pay them?
No.
Not until we move.
We still have our own dispatchers is the problem and.
Yeah, we're not paying KenCom anything until they start providing us for service.
Do they know when that's going to happen?
None of us know for sure right now. I mean, like I said, we have a goal that we're, target we're shooting for and we're working through all the outstanding steps, but.
And we have to keep our dispatchers in place until the two fire departments are.
We can't switch over until they switch over. I was in the impression the ICC took, they said 90 days or longer, and I thought we already turned that in so that we don't have, I mean, 90 days from now, it was past September 1st.
My understanding was it was 90 days to prepare the agreement, at the time with the ICC should not be that.
Oh.
That should not be 90 days, but to get the agreement was supposed to shoot for 90 days, I thought was the target.
Is KenCom not prepared for us? Are they not prepared to absorb Montgomery?
They've hired one dispatcher and they're currently in the process of advertising for another dispatcher so that they will be ready for us, once the agreements are.
We had eight.
Correct, they have a large organization, they won't need as many, because we won't have all the groups that we dispatch for going with us.
And we're still, we can't do anything until the two.
Right, but they'll be ready to move when, I believe when we're ready to move.
Okay.
We're sort of the main engine that's driving the.
Yeah, but, but we're not, we're not restricted because of them.
Oh, we're not.
That's your question? Yeah, no, we're not.
So when we're ready, we're ready.
When we're ready, we're gone, yes.
And then what happens to them?
They'll follow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I just asked Jeff, but we've given them our official six-month notice previously. I don't know when, but.
We, we're required by the agreement to give them four-month notice. We gave it to them in March till July 15th. That's, so our agreement now is good, but we're not going to move and just leave them high and dry. The, actually Montgomery Fire has a signed contract with them right now. Is that correct, chief? And Aurora Township Fire is following here shortly.
So we're not paying two dispatch services right now?
No.
No.
Still paying one?
Correct.
Maybe that's where I got the June was your July 15th, which is past, and maybe that's where I got, we're running late.
Well, we, we wanted to fulfill the contract that we signed with the fire departments in '08. And that contract says if there's any change in service, we must notify them in writing for four months, within four months. So we did that in March and I will send you a copy of those letters, they've received them. It's actually a courtesy now.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, like Director, I'm sorry, Administrator Zofa said, the goal has always been the fall.
And I don't mean to speak for the board, I think everybody in this room knows that our dispatch, our dispatchers are working hard, they're working, I'm sure, long hours and from a board perspective, haven't seen a whole lot of updates on it, thus probably some of the concern, but just want to make sure we're providing the best service, not paying, double, double paying, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, no, we won't start paying until we move.
And I don't think anybody, I, I don't understand what goes in the process, I know a lot more than what we're probably thinking, but potentially maybe from here on out, updates, major accomplishments in the notes would be beneficial for the board, so.
Absolutely.
You have any more, Danny? Okay, anybody else? Stan?
I wanted to talk about the railroad crossing at Webster Street a bit. It's, in my opinion, become very deteriorated and rough and there's a process for us to request that those repairs be made and that the crossing be improved and smoothed. I'm guessing that the emergency vehicles that cross it are finding it very rough, I find it rough in my passenger car. So I wondered if the board might agree to ask staff to explore that process of what's involved in getting the railroad to fix the crossing and to go ahead and initiate that if it takes several months to happen and it's only going to get worse than it is now by the time we get it repaired.
Is there any objection to that? I don't know if anybody wants to address that or speak on that tonight, but I'm not.
We're going to look into it.
Okay. All right, excellent. Lastly, on the lighter side of life, as most of you know, last weekend, the Village of Montgomery, the City of Aurora, villages of Oswego and Yorkville, all participated in the Amoy kayak trip. The presidents or mayors from those communities kayaked from Aurora through Montgomery, Oswego and Yorkville. And I will say that the, the stop here in Montgomery was extremely well-attended, we had almost every one of our board members, staff, consultants, stopped by, so I appreciate everybody coming for the support. It was probably, it was actually the best-attended stop that we had, not to say that the other ones weren't excellent. I think we did have a resident that commented about the use of those kind of funds, I think the greater scope of the project was to highlight the importance and the, the value of the Fox River, that not everybody has that. So an excellent trip, I actually went through the Whitewater Park for the first time afterwards and would encourage anybody to go rent a tube and float down that, so.
So you went through afterwards?
Well, we stopped, most of, most of the folks didn't. Me, the village president in Oswego, Brian Leclerc, went through it, so. Trying to get Yorkville and Oswego, but it didn't work, so. The City of Aurora presented all of us with these paddles, they are for show, not for use, so I will pass it down that way, if you guys want to pass it around, that'd be good. And if there isn't anything else.
We did, we did get on CBS, I looked on channel two all the time, could not, I must have walked away at that time, but my mother did see it and was so excited about it that Montgomery was on CBS and it was yesterday and somehow I thought I had two on all the time, but it was on there according to my mother and she would know.
Awesome. The producer for the six o'clock news actually kayaked with us the whole day, interviewed everybody, so I think he's doing a bigger feature on that and he'll let us know when that comes out, so I'll keep you posted on that, so.
I'd like to compliment staff on the postings for Facebook, because I was, and I talked to Debbie earlier today and she said she had written some and she timed them to go out throughout the day because it seemed like every, every hour, my wife was telling me, oh, here's another thing about the Montgomery thing. So it was really nice to be able to do that and time those notices out onto Facebook to help people remind them about it.
And I, I don't want to downplay the staff time that went into this kind of trip, the publicizing, organizing, Charlie Zein, I don't know, what's the name of the company that he owned? Yeah. And anyway, Jeff has some pictures from the trip, five or 10 we'll look at real quick before executive session. That's a press conference in the City of Aurora. That's four good-looking guys. We did get to see a bald eagle just south of the bridge in Oswego. Brian Leclerc knew exactly where he was sitting, so kind of geared us over there. Few shots here to show you the folks that were there and to show that we did, actually had a huge attendance, that was down by the mill that is closed. And the other thing too is all access Aurora is doing, is it a 30-minute documentary on the trip?
Yes.
That we will have access to use, the footage from that on our, anything that we would like to use, it'll also air on their TV and that, so. There's two aspects to this trip, I think most people are well-aware of this, but the one would be to promote the use of the Fox River as an economic driver for this area, but also to promote the opening of the boater bypass, which is at our dam right now, that's the only obstruction in a 13-mile stretch along the Fox River. So that is a project that the village worked with consultants on in 2008. I mean, it's an expensive project, it's not something we would tackle alone, thus the trip with four municipalities, so it's the first step in a, in a long process, I'm sure, so. If, if you want to see the paddle again, let me know, otherwise if you have any questions, you can contact me or staff on that.
I just have one final comment. I wanted to acknowledge your efforts on this project as well, getting together with the other municipalities, I think was really important to draw so much attention to it, so I just wanted to single you out and, and let you know, I appreciate that.
All I did was call them and then passed it off to Jamie and staff and they orchestrated the whole thing, made it a lot bigger than what I had envisioned, I was thinking we were going to get four guys to go kayaking, just like you would get four guys to go golfing and it kind of turned into something special, so.
Several nice comments too, from several of the different mayors regarding our bridge and the flowers on our bridge. You know, that they really thought that it was a great location, that that was a great location.
I did get one big complaint from Brian Leclerc, he said, the president in Oswego, he said, why aren't we doing this at night? Because the rope lights that you guys have on the bridge are phenomenal, he said, I love those things, but you can't do that at night, so.
Next year, we'll get you fishing poles.
There you go. One guy had a, he was fly, fly fishing, so. You guys can see the future meetings on there, no surprises. With that, we'll move on to item 10, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to five ILCS, 120 over two, C2.
So moved.
Moved, our second.
Second.
Second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Van?
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
I, did we, I'm concerned that we didn't vote to approve the Lockton Street improvement. Did we vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
That's what I was...
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Take the roll, please.
Is it Youngerman?
Youngerman?
Yep.
Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman, Trustee Marasek? Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yeah.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
I don't want to see one vote no. No. I want to stay and talk more.
Have a good time. Yeah, right.